Items, we have to reopen it, or we're just starting a new meeting, or? Well, I was saying, because we, some of these items were on that previous committee of the whole meeting.
Whole, yes.
So, and we moved them to this one. So, I can't remember, did we, did we just move them, or do we have to open that old meeting, or?
No, we just moved them.
We just moved them, okay. Right, yeah, so later tonight, right, right.
Okay.
Could we, could we do them after the planning commission, if the planning commission goes short? Like, is? Yeah, yeah, it is, okay.
All right, well, then I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order for the twenty first of March. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Taking roll call, all members are present. Do we have any public comment? Or actually, you know what, hold on one second, let me get on the right thing. All right, yeah, any public comment? Then we'll move on to our first order of business, E one, the THC moratorium ordinance, number seven, seven, two, discussion. And that was actually brought up by me, so I can kind of take the lead on that. I had had a complaint from a resident about that new smoke shop that's in the same mall over there across from Quick Trip, and wanted to know how we were going to handle the situation with a business violating our, our moratorium ordinance, so I wanted to kind of take a look at that, and, you know, this was something for you guys that, that weren't on before, we were supposed to have done it as kind of a, a short term, kind of a buying time sort of a deal with, because they had introduced this THC, this Delta nine, I think it was, right, so that was something that the state kind of did haphazardly, and at the end of the session last year, really didn't give us time to, you know, really take account of what was going on even, so so that's why we did the moratorium, but, you know, I'm kind of of the belief that, you know, we've waited long enough here, and they really haven't given us any more direction. You know, they're talking about recreational marijuana being legalized now, and I, I hate for us to, to limit a business that we have in town where they're not able to sell something, but if they were already here selling it before, and they were grandfathered in, then they're still selling that, but a new business isn't. So, that's, that's why I brought it up, was that we had that question from a resident about how are we going to handle this? So, you know, I think that's a time to talk about it, is are we going to actually enforce the moratorium the way that it's written and the way that we did it, or are we going to say maybe it's time to, to lift the moratorium and wait for more direction from the state, was, was kind of the question I wanted to bring to you guys tonight, so. Yeah, they have signs up in the window that say, you know, THC drinks, I think, or something like that, and, so, yeah, and, and even if they, I mean, they have signs that say CBD, I mean, even, even that, according to the moratorium, is not allowed, you know, I mean, it's not just the THC, even the CBD was something that was included in that moratorium, so.
So, did, what did you do, fine them? I mean, what's their punishment? What do we do for that? I guess that's the first question to answer, if there's a punishment, and if we're going to do it, and then discuss lifting the moratorium.
So, in Article seven, for enforcement of that moratorium, a violation of this ordinance shall be a misdemeanor. In addition, the city may enforce this ordinance by mandamus injunction, other approche, appropriate civil remedy in any court or complete competent jurisdiction, or through the city's administrative penalties program section, under section two oh five of the city code. So, I think that if there is a compliance check done by the, the police officers, or the police department, and they failed that compliance check, that, that would be the penalty.
That I'm not sure of.
The state is kind of making it legal, in a, in a sense, aren't they? I know you guys, you guys have did a bunch of research on this, I think, it was, that probably October or something, and I'd heard some of it.
So, the moratorium was passed in September, we did do some research, and really, the league's guidance on it, because there's so much uncertainty of what the state is going to do, is to kind of just sit and wait as it goes through the legislation process. As of recently, about a week ago, is very likely that something is going to pass in legalizing marijuana in the state of Minnesota, is what I'm told from the League of Minnesota Cities, it's just whether or not there will be local control that is passed down to the jurisdictions that can actually enforce zoning restrictions, so, within the city. I think that I got, the article that came out, it was either yesterday or today, from the League of Minnesota Cities, is that there was new language added to the bill that does give some local control for zoning restrictions, not to allow cities to not allow it, but to be able to regulate where it goes, and put parameters around those businesses of retail establishment, as well as growers. Likely that it'll pass, but it has not gone through both the House and Senate to be finalized yet.
Okay, and during that discussion, wasn't there discussion on not having these places advertise that they sell these products within like five hundred feet of a school or daycare, or wasn't there something like that?
There was discussion on that, however, that was not included
Okay.
in our moratorium.
I think we came up with like a hundred yards or something.
Well, we were trying to figure that out, and what really was the, the crux of the problem, was that, well, you've got, you know, a gas station at, like, say, Mobil, for example, is right next to that daycare, well, you know, they're probably, I don't know if they are or not, but I think that they're selling CBD products of some kind, and, so, I mean, I don't know, but, but, I mean, so you're having a situation there where it's like, well, the gas station is, it's close to the, the daycare, but I mean, is it really a problem?
There were, there were some places that were going some, a ridiculous distance. And, and we're, then we discussed, like, not property
From the door, yeah.
door to door, because that would be a lot, that'd be fair, because property, property, I mean, you're talking the width of that street behind
Right. I, I guess, for, in my opinion, I think we should let them sell what they're going to sell, let the market rule it, but I, I understand if you don't want to have advertising for the product outside, if there's a way to limit that, or, I guess, it's kind of interesting.
So, are you saying there, that THC nine is not legal in Minnesota yet?
It is legal.
I thought so, because I see everybody selling it, so where's the problem lie?
We have the discretion to decide if we want to be.
Where we want it.
Yeah.
And that's why we did the moratorium originally, was because we wanted to buy time to figure out what we were going to do.
If the state was going to come up with some kind of guidelines for us.
And they didn't.
And they haven't yet, so.
Does, does that station up there, I know they have a separate door to go in for the tobacco area. Can you walk around, or do they have that closed off now?
You gotta go in from the front, on that front side only.
You aren't going from the McDonald's, you need to go around that, the cash registers and get in there?
Oh, that store, I don't know what's going on there, I haven't been in that store in years, we're talking about the one next to, next to, uh,
Where the old dentist office used to be and stuff.
Yeah, the one, the only one that's technically in, in violation of that is the new one that's open, so the other one, yeah, so their grandfathered in, the old ones, like the CBD joint and that one by BP.
Tobacco shop.
Oh, I would grandfather him, and he's got a, I was just in there to check that place out, and he's got a nice secure place, I mean, I, I can't see anybody, any kids getting anything they shouldn't have their hands on.
But still, it's just, he's breaking the law.
He's breaking our moratorium.
Yeah, we've got to kind of.
Here's, here's my two cents on this, and you probably agree or disagree. It's so close to the law, the state making a ruling on this. If it was six, eight months, nine months out, I would probably say we better have a conversation with him. We're talking a month or two, he's already done it, I, I don't see any reason to argue with him at this point. But maybe make it aware of him, now with the law, if the state makes that ruling, we're going to have to follow that guidelines of the state. So, just be prepared, if you are doing something that's against the state ruling, you may have to stop doing this, or change this, or whatever. That'd be my only, my only take on it.
Sure.
The only other thing I had, I thought we made, didn't we pass a couple of years ago about selling glass?
We've got that up for discussion tonight as well.
Yes, that'll be coming up. One thing that I do want to clarify, Mayor and Council, is the reason why the moratorium was put into place, I think more or less was not to establish all the who can sell, who cannot sell alone, it really is the zoning restrict, regulation part of it. Where do we want, I think that council had, I mean, many council members had desire to allow it, however, where is it going to be allowed? So, I would suggest, instead of repealing the moratorium and not doing anything, and waiting for the state, is to just start that conversation sooner, where do you want to allow the sales to be regulated? Because it is anticipated that the local jurisdictions will have some zoning regulations that they can enforce. So, do you want to see it near a school or not? Do you want to allow it in all business retail zoning districts? Those kind of questions are to be answered, I think, and can be answered, if, if council so chooses, and then move right to an ordinance, and it can be a very thin ordinance, so to say, doesn't have a lot of restrictions in it, but just tells businesses, yeah, you can sell it, and here's where you can sell it, or here's where you can grow it or distribute, those zoning things. Whether it passes or not, we still will need to have that conversation.
I would say that it has to be in a retail building, I don't think I want to see somebody selling another house. I don't want to see it near a school. What distance you want to put, or the daycare, I mean, those kids in daycare aren't going to run over to the
Right.
gas station and go buy CBD, I mean, that's, you've got to look at little kids, but I, I think, I think the guidelines that we set on what we originally talked about being close to a school, I think those are fine in place. I, I just don't want to see, I think it's got to be in a retail business zoning area. I think that's our, just clear cut.
Another thing that we discussed was whether or not there should be a fee attached to it with like a tobacco license, we have tobacco license, we have alcohol license to have that, now, I do think that the state will likely put some kind of cap on it for cities, because there are cities more in the metro that you'll see charging upwards of ten thousand dollars per license. So, I do think that the state is going to put that ca, a cap on it, so it's not too egregious for people to get into this business endeavor. Which I think that one thing that we discussed briefly prior was maybe matching, or doing something similar, is to the alcohol or the tobacco licensing that we have in this city already. Because then there's a benefit of knowing who is selling regulated products.
I don't disagree with that, I think if we just stick with our tobacco or alcohol licensing, I think we leave it at that. I, I, we're not charging the store over again amount, they're out to make a buck, too.
How much do we charge for the alcohol license?
Tobacco license.
It depends for if it's on sale or off sale.
Actually, is it?
Tobacco's county.
Okay, I was thinking of state.
There's a license for each, on sale and off sale, right?
Correct. I can pull up our fee schedule here.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to see it more than like a hundred fifty or two hundred bucks a year, or something, like feasible, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a good guideline, anyway.
And we can pull the information that we had, that went to committee a few, a couple of months ago, when we had some of these things lined up, I think we did have what the tobacco was at the county, what they charged, but I don't remember that off the top of my head. A hundred and fifty? About a hundred and fifty, right, for tobacco.
I think that's fine, I think that's acceptable, as far as I'm concerned.
Liquor did go up higher than that.
I would, what is liquor?
So, if we have, I mean, there is a, there is a background investigation fee, which we recommend, and then.
It would have to be, it would have to be in line with liquor.
Beer off sale is a hundred and fifty, beer on sale is two fifty.
I'm sorry.
Intoxicating is, on sale is twenty five hundred, and then there's an additional two hundred dollars for Sunday sales.
So, I know during the last meeting, Paul Burgley spoke about, he's, he sells like a lotion, and he'd have to sell, he wouldn't be able to sell it if the permit cost was too much, because he'd never make his money back. So, if we're doing like a CBD based permit, I think that one should be the cheaper of the two, but say if they maril, if they legalize recreational marijuana, I think that one should be larger, if that makes sense, because that one's going to be more of the, the moneymaker for.
The big part with that kind of, it's, it's not really comparing apples to apples, depends on if it has
Right, THC.
hemp in it, and THC in it, or.
Well, original CBD was, it, I talked to a doctor one time, and I asked him about that, he says, you believe in placebos? That's what he told me about CBD.
That's fair.
Now, now with the THC is a different level, I know some people that take it, and they swear by it, will I take it? No, I got enough issues.
One thing I want to bring up, though, because this does impact what Councilmember Merrill said, is we did discuss that previously when we adopted the moratorium, is to not include those lotions, and just do edible products, because we didn't want to include the lotions, or the
The surface day products?
the things that people give to their animals, because that also is included in the new law that was passed in July of last year, we did not include those, it was just, it was the edibles.
Okay.
I agree with that, that's fine.
Well, what about like CBD, if they, like Paul, let's say he wanted to sell the actual whatever it is, gummy bears, or whatever they sell, what if he was, if he wanted to sell them, was required to keep them in a locked cabinet?
Well, they're all, I think they're all required.
They all require.
Yeah, that's, that's state law.
Even the lotions or everything?
I don't know about the lotions, but any, the edibles are all.
They're all locked up. Yep, they have to be.
Even though the new law encompass CBD products that previously were on the market, what we focused on was the edibles.
I think, I think any, I think, I, like I said, the CBD edibles, you know, the gummies that originally came out, like I said, I've had, I mean, numerous people that know their shit about, that's part of my language about those things, they said it's like a placebo. I think anything containing THC is where we need to control that regulations.
Yep, so is there any way that, I mean, we don't want to necessarily follow other cities, but what we want to avoid is probably to have all these marijuana, when it becomes legal, or if it does, we don't want all these marijuana dealers to come to Isani, because we're significantly cheaper than, say, Ham Lake or Blaine, is there a way? I mean, the state's going to have to have some guidelines, so for actual recreational marijuana, could we just follow those state guidelines? Just so that we're not sitting there looking like a community where, hey, we're going to have fifty marijuana dealers here, because we're significantly cheaper? Could we just follow the state guidelines at first, and then sort of adjust based on what other cities do?
So, my understanding is the, the state is not going to have guidelines on what to charge, they're going to likely have a maximum not to exceed whatever you do decide to charge.
So, I, I, I think, to your question on that, at this point, we shouldn't do any charging on anything until we can tell the city of Cambridge, North Branch, Princeton, Ham Lake, any of those areas, if, when they adopt this, what they're going to do for that, that'd be the only way we could assess that, that could be three months down the road.
Right.
And I, so if we wait till then, what's the difference? And I mean, we just, I don't want them to have a bunch of extra paperwork to do. We just set, you know, where they have to, where they can sell it, locations, and then a fee amount to be determined in the future. I mean, that, and then, then all that is, is it's them going in, crossing a line, and adding in a dollar amount that we decide at that point. I mean, we, we could have that discussion for eight hours up here, and we'll still never agree on it, until we get, until we have something to base it on.
Right.
Then are we going to do? Maybe, we're kind of having the discussion anyway, about the, what's coming down the pipeline with recreational marijuana? So, I imagine we're going to write this kind of to include, include that for future reasons, but
I would assume likely that, the location of where you're going to allow it, and the zoning for selling, for retail, for if you are going to allow it from an industrial standpoint, like distribution, no matter if it's THC less than point three percent, or it becomes legal marijuana, I think that the same rules would likely apply, now, that's for council to decide, but I think that we can lay out a lot of that groundwork, and not have a lot of changes that would come, even if it does become legalized, at least we would be ready, because right now we still need to iron some of that out, like the distance from the school, distance from daycare, does that matter? Those things we could iron out now, so then when it comes, if it does come, the, the city is prepared. What would the fee be if it is allowed? Those kind of questions, so we're ready.
I remember what I was getting at, so, you know, like, every year, we have the bars, restaurants come in, we approve or not approve their liquor tobacco licenses, or, no, I think we should do the same.
Yep.
I don't disagree.
With that, and then I wouldn't have a problem with a hundred yards, door to door.
From a school, or just a school?
Or daycare.
I think, I think if anything, we should do just the school, because like daycare kids are usually not old enough to go.
No, but you
It just limits a lot.
we've had daycares complain before in the past about pawn shop opening up, a bar possibly opening up down, down from a daycare.
But that was, that one was spreading your story to it, though, that was the problem.
Well, it was actually, actually on the one end of the strip mall, and the daycare was on the other end of the strip mall. And there's businesses in between there, but.
You're only, you're only talking THC when you're talking now.
Controlled substances.
Okay, okay. So, if they sell CBD at the gas station, they're probably not going to sell THC at the gas station, right?
Right, that's, only the
So, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yep.
Like I said, I think this should all be based on anything containing THC.
A hundred yards isn't, I don't think that's horrible.
That's not bad for actual THC.
Door to door, not property line to property line.
And then CBD don't have much for input, much for, or none, or, okay, yeah.
So, like Mobil property one.
You just said property line, property line, but before you said door to door, which one then?
Door to door.
I'd say door to door.
Hundred yards, door to door.
Okay, I was just making sure.
I don't disagree with that, that's fine.
Yep, on the THC, and then the CBD don't really restrict that, because, you don't, yeah. Yeah.
As a, it'd be, Mobil wouldn't be affected by the hundred yards, unless they were selling the Delta nine stuff, or started selling marijuana in a vending machine or whatever, you know.
So, how are you going to deal with THC edibles and THC, which you can smoke? Or, we're going to treat it different, I hope?
They're still controlled substances, no. No, because they're both.
They're both THC containing.
Okay, well, then, anybody who is selling CBD right now
Difference.
in my opinion.
You understand what I'm going on with that?
I'm selling THC.
No? Well, one's going to make your mood alter, make you high, or make you not drive a vehicle.
Mind altering, it's kind of like having a liquor store and a
Going to make your joint pain go away, you rub it on, you know, whatever.
Have to think about that.
One's going to be probably policed, and one's not, and that's, I guess, what I'm getting at, far as
I think that, if I may, Council, I think that the, I think the differences here is between if it's a THC product derived from hemp, which is what they legalized in July, compared to legal marijuana, I think that's, that's the deciphering, like, the line, so, and there could be different restrictions on those, or licenses on those, if you want to differentiate them, but I think that if the state is to legalize marijuana, you will likely see dispensaries coming, where you actually can go into dispensary stores. You may have businesses in town that want to do that, but you may also just have businesses that want to sell edibles currently, that may be happening now. So, there might be some different tiers, but I think it's all going to be within the same chapter of how, where you're locating them.
I'd say when the time comes, we, we differentiate the, the more mind altering ones, we make those harder to get, and more expensive to sell, and then the regular gummies and basics, I don't think we should regulate as much, if that makes sense.
I think they're going to be in the same stores anyway.
Yeah.
So, one thing that staff can do, is staff can draft some of this, which I think that, I do have some of this already kind of drafted from previous conversations, and present it to the planning commission, if we want to start this ball rolling a little bit faster, so we are prepared if there is some legislative change coming up, to see, make sure that the planning commission is also on board with these changes, or the chapter adding, that would keep the moratorium in place, or the option is to repeal the moratorium, which would have no regulations on anything, and then keep moving forward with the other end, or the other chapter through planning commission.
I think, I think we should keep the moratorium, just leave it, because then we have the legal means to do something about it, if something happens in the next couple of months, but we don't necessarily have to, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Just leave it the way it is, right, but if something extreme happens, we can.
Cover it, but don't act on it.
Yeah.
Well, so what, what do you want to tell that resident, then, that, you know, I don't know if they complained to actual code enforcement, so I mean, it's just a complaint at this point, to me.
I think we just
How do you want to handle that? Well, we're just not going to enforce it, you know, I mean, that's kind of, yeah.
Maybe ask the big guy in there to make sure everything's the way it's supposed to be, if it's not. You know, give them a warning, I don't know.
I mean, could we just have them take down the sign for, until something comes through, or, I mean, if we have this, this, uh?
I mean, I guess, I think the reality is, you already have two places in town selling the stuff, so. One, is one more place going to make a huge difference, because those other two are grandfathered in, so I would say let's lift the moratorium as soon as we can, so we don't have to, to, we don't have to enforce it if we don't want to, which it sounds like we don't really want to. And then we can start drafting that next, that next ordinance, that's going to be focused on the THC, you know, a hundred yards, door to door, a fee to be decided in a future date, when we know kind of what, what the legalization of that is going to look like.
Zoning.
And then we, we want to have an annual review.
Retail, retail.
Yeah, okay, and where do we want to, what zoning districts do we?
Or industrial, or commercial, but retail.
And we want to have that annual review, I don't know if you, if you heard that, but.
All right, I motioned to lift the moratorium.
We don't have to.
So, Mayor, Mayor and Council, if I may, the process, we can't take any action here at committee of the whole, so the process is to do any change in the ordinance, whether it's repealing it in its entirety, is to post it for ten days, and then it has to go to council after it's had that ten days, so if we did post it tomorrow, do you want to pull up the calendar? We can see if we have enough time to get on the next council agenda.
Should.
I think we only have nine business days, right? We're short, so it would then go on to the April eighteenth city council meeting to repeal it in its entirety, and then, just so everyone's aware, then we would not have any rules or restrictions on any of the THC edible products, if that was, if that was done.
I would rather leave it on.
Well, no rules or restrictions until we get this done, basically, yeah.
Right, which will take a couple of months, by the time it goes through the public hearing at planning commission, and then back through council for a final approval, but yes.
If we just leave it the way it is, we're not wasting staff time, and then we're going to have to address this by probably around that time anyways, so I think we should just leave it the way it is, and, I mean,
That makes sense.
it's kind of a reality of, yeah. That's, I mean, that's what I was
My only point is, if you leave it the way it is, you've, you're basically, if somebody does complain, we're going to have to go and shut that business down that opened, you know, I mean, if, and not that, they haven't complained to, to JED yet, so I mean, it's not something that, that they have to act on, but if they do, then
Does that?
then he's going to have to act on it, right, so.
Is that what our moratorium says, though, that we shut them down, or, I mean, I think we give them
They're going to get a misdemeanor, and then they're going to have to stop selling those.
Those are all possible things that can
I think the chief should speak on this, I think that it wouldn't, probably the first step, I'm not sure if that is the misdemeanor, but he can tell the process if there was somebody selling something they shouldn't.
Well, it's no different than any other ordinance violation, you know, we take enforcement action, doesn't mean you're going to go to jail, or you're going to get a ticket, or you're going to get a warning, it's whatever enforcement action is necessary to solve the problem at hand, so it doesn't mean you're going to go get a ticket, I mean, if somebody complains, we'll look at the moratorium, and probably advise them what the moratorium says, and see how they react to that, and what conclusion we come, we prefer to come to a conclusion than an enforcement action on most of the ordinance stuff, just like any ordinance nuisance stuff in the neighborhoods, they get a letter, you know, so we notify them, and try to work with them before enforcement action's taken, so doesn't mean that if we get a complaint, we're going to run over there and write them a ticket, you know, it's not going to happen that way.
The education piece first.
So, with most businesses, when they get in trouble, don't they have a certain window to address the issue, like ninety days?
Depends on whatever.
Depends what it is, but couldn't we say, give them ninety days, because in ninety days, there could be a whole new policy that lays out the actual Minnesota laws? So, if we just, if that was their penalty, we give them ninety days, and then after the end of ninety days, they have to do something about it, I don't know if that's a potential.
This is a little different, though, this isn't like a boat parked on your grass, this is
Right.
selling THC products, so.
But there's already two businesses that do.
But we were aware of that.
Right.
That they were selling it before we put the moratorium on.
Correct, they were already selling it, they were, I mean, I think from what we had heard when they came to, the one came to present some information to council at one point in time, I think that they were ready, they were hopeful that that was going to pass, which it did, so I think that some of the businesses were ready, and the council recognized that, and didn't want to have them have to stop, because they'd already been selling it since July, and our moratorium didn't go into place until September, because I think it caught cities off guard, that that was going to go through so, almost, dare I say, easily.
So, now, basically, we're, I mean, who's to say that the smoke shop guy had no idea, because if I were to look at a town, and I already see two places selling THC, or selling marijuana products, I would think, well, I could sell it, too, what, I mean, so we
That's why I said, we're just, that chief would just go in there and
And just tell them?
Assess the situation, and
Well, that's, that's what my, my point is, is that they, we had stores selling it from July until like October, and we had, we had no idea.
Yeah.
So, is it really that big a deal? I mean, this, this place is already selling it. Even though we have the moratorium, it's like, it would just be a, more of a clear message from city hall, that, hey, we're lifting this, or we, we have lifted it, and now we're going to work on regulating it, and, I don't know, that's, that's all I'm saying, is instead of having to deal with a couple of months of, well, we're, we're enforcing this, but we're also getting rid of it, kind of a thing, like, why not just say one or the other, like, that's
But we don't have to get rid of it yet.
If I may ask one more question, then, why wouldn't we just regulate it and have it be a licensed use right away?
Yeah, we could.
I would, I would like to see us do, like, a I would, I would like to see us do, like, a hundred fifty dollar licensing for CBD type products that aren't mood altering, and then, what was the alcohol cost for alcohol license, was it twenty-five hundred dollars or something?
Intoxicating was twenty-five hundred.
For intoxicating marijuana substance type businesses, could we just do twenty-five hundred dollars for that? I mean, I think that's pretty reasonable for both. And then, we have it set in, in the guidelines now, so the place that's non-compliant now could come in and apply for a permit, pay their hundred fifty dollars, and then they'd be in compliance, and then the moratorium doesn't really matter. If that makes sense. And then we're already set up for future, when this does come down, we could, I mean, those are good numbers, I think, but if, if it ends up that other cities are charging eight thousand dollars, well, maybe we could address it then, because we don't want everybody coming here. And then also, I think, not just, I think the industrial district should be able to have that as well, not just retail, because a lot, a lot of these groweries are gonna be industrial areas, and a lot of the, it's like a brewery, a lot of these places like to sell-
They're, they're, they're gonna just be growers.
Not necessarily, there's some people-
They're not gonna sell them out of a big building that they're growing in. They'll sell them out of brick and mortar somewhere else smaller.
Sure, but it would be nice not to limit them, too, because there's, I mean, if you look at breweries, almost all breweries sell storefront too, even though they're industrial, mostly industrial type business. So I think, I mean, I guess I'm not really up on, I've been to dispensaries, but I've never paid attention if they grow it there too, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I mean, I don't think we should limit them to only, only the, like, retail locations, I mean, what, why would we do that, though? Why would we limit it to just retail?
I mean, if someone wants to be a grower, and they wanna build ten thousand square foot building on an expensive, you know, commercial or industrial site.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna wanna put retail space in, in industrial park, because first of all, square footage is way too much money for what they're gonna bring in, what it costs for that square footage. They could rent, I think Luke is right, that is something that they, they do.
I've, I've been to many breweries where they have an industrial location, and their main section, obviously, the biggest part of the building is making the beer, or the alcohol, and then they have a small storefront where you can buy the stuff, because you, there's a lot of businesses that are gonna want that, and I think we should allow that.
But I think that, I think that we can address that if someone comes and wants it.
Right.
I, I like the concept, but I think we should wait to see how they write state statute, they might say you can't sell where you grow.
Okay.
So, it could end up being two different spots, but that concept could be okay, where they grow in the back, sell in the front, maybe give tours, if it's allowed, it all depends on what state statute's gonna be wrote.
I would- I would almost guarantee that many places do that. So I mean, if we can set it now, that it's a hundred fifty dollar permit fee for the non-intoxicating, twenty-five hundred for the intoxicating, for the permit, and I think that is a pretty good starting point for all of us.
I don't think we really need to charge for the non-intoxicating stuff. We, we never have.
So maybe just do a permit, just because we do wanna know who's selling it, maybe, but just a free permit, or fifty dollars, or-
Every gas station, every gas station's gonna be selling CBD.
Okay.
Gummies, or whatever, non, non THC, everybody, everybody does it.
Okay.
Maybe a token permit of like fifty or a hundred dollars a year, so we actually know who's selling it?
So that's the thing, because we don't do business license or registration, we don't know who comes to town and sells or does what business. But right now, what's, if we wanted to at least have a city code chapter that was about THC products, or cannabinoids, I guess I should say, and include a license fee for doing the THC products, if it did become legal, we could add to that chapter to add additional, so marijuana licenses or different, different levels. I'm seeing that they have things that are going through the legislation right now, there is a cannabis microbusiness, a cannabis mezzo business, cannabis retailer, medical cannabis retailer, lower potency hemp retailer. There will be new languages that, and definitions that we'll need to add to the chapter, but then, I think that it would allow for businesses that are selling the THC products now that are legal, allow them to keep doing so, if that's the desire of council, but it has some kind of fee, whatever council wants to set with that, so you're allowing them to do it, they're doing it legally, and you're keeping track of who is selling it, maybe you wanna put a limit on it, you're only allowing so many businesses within the city, maybe there's three, maybe there's ten, I don't know, but that's something to consider. You can do that groundwork now, and allow that business to start selling it legally, with a ten day post ordinance change of city code.
I guess, I think we should, you let the market determine how many CBD places we need, I don't think we should determine how many come into town, but I think we should know who's selling what, in that sense, because, I don't know, I mean, how much, how much does a permit cost in city time, fifty to a hundred dollars, probably?
What kind of permit?
Like, something like, like this, how much would this cost roughly, you think? Well, so, just so that if we do like a basic CBD, non-intoxicating substance permit, so that we know who's selling the product, how much city staff time do you think that would take? A hundred dollars, you think that'll cover it?
I think a hundred to two hundred dollars, it depends on who has to review it, if they require it to be reviewed by the state to get it back, that takes more time, because our clerk has to send in separate documentation to the state, and then wait for the state to then kinda middleman it with them, but I'd say a hundred to two hundred dollars, depending on what it is. If they do a background check, we have, the police department does that, so we try to encompass those, so we're, we're breaking even. I think when we evaluate all of our fees every year, that's what we try to make sure we're doing.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to know that stuff, though.
I, I think, not on CBD, but anything THC, maybe.
Right.
I think it's, it's so ambiguous.
CBD, I mean, that's just, okay, are we gonna start tracking everybody that sells milk?
I mean, isn't, isn't Delta nine variant a CBD?
Delta nine has, yeah, Delta nine's different.
But that's intoxicating.
Yeah, yep.
So-
That one you wanna track.
But that's considered a CBD substance, not a THC substance.
No, it's got Delta nine on it, makes it THC.
It's THC less than, which is THC derived from hemp, less than point three percent.
Yeah.
I don't know how that one's defined.
Why don't you think the state took the time to get all this stuff hammered out for us?
I don't know.
They don't know what to do?
They weren't ready for it.
They don't have enough time?
Yeah, I guess not. Yeah, I mean, so you're saying, if we can come up with some solutions today of how we wanna approach this regulation now, then let's just post what we're gonna do, try to get it wrapped up here, and, and have the new ordinance done by the eighteenth of April.
So we have a jumpstart, basically.
Well, so we really, we have time, kinda to figure it out, I guess, if we're not looking until the eighteenth of April, but.
So, do, anybody is selling like the, the new gummies, the Delta nine, or whatever, basically, is what we're concerned about?
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is, I think the consensus for the committee is that you do want there to be a city code chapter that regulates a business license on THC products in the city.
Yes.
It's still yet to be determined on exactly the cost, but you wanna make sure that we are covering all city staff's time to review the application, and do a background check and issue the license. We don't want it to include CBD products that are non-edibles, that are used for animal, or like lotions and tinctures type products.
Correct.
Okay. I think that if we, if staff works on drafting this, and bring it back one time to council, then we, if there's consensus derived from that meeting of, yes, it looks good, then we post it, and we pass it, that allows the business to start selling it with this license process. Then from there, I think that we do have to make sure, kind of in tandem, we're going with the zoning code portion of it, which is to ensure that, we don't want there to be any additional costs, if we're allowing it in the retail zoning districts, and then we can build from there, as we look at distribution, if it's growing, and then at that time, the legislature is probably still going through at the same time, and if we have to keep adding and amending it to add in more of what becomes more legal, we will do that, but at least we have that foundation on the THC products. That'd be my recommendation.
Sounds great.
Yep.
That sounds, yeah, I just don't, it's not fair to businesses in town to, to have them living in limbo or anything like that, I just, I wanna be clear about what our intentions are, and what we're doing, so yeah, I think that's, that's a good plan.
So is that gonna lift the, the moratorium, then?
Well, in about a month.
So as we're about to, after the, the drafted new ordinance gets posted for ten days, and comes back to council before passing, it would also be in tandem, at the same time, I would be posting ten days to repeal the moratorium, so they would happen together, one goes away, one comes in.
Okay, so, what do we do in the meantime to address this? Just send in Travis?
I mean, nobody's actually, nobody's actually complained to, to the code enforcement officer, so, at this point, now, there's nothing to worry about with it,
Okay.
But I'll just, I'll just tell that resident that we're in the process of, of reforming that, and, you know, it'll be, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good plan. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, E two, we're gonna cut from this meeting, I'm still waiting on info for that. E three, zoning ordinance, accessory structures, and accessory dwelling units.
All right, so, this is kinda piggybacking off of our past couple conversations at cow meetings, with the forty percent impervious rule, I think we got that kinda covered now that we wanna see that go through, so that can go to the next planning commission meeting. Accessory dwelling units is kind of a whole nother set of regulations that we're gonna have to look at here, so. Staff did request that these ADUs have additional regulations on accessory structures, just based on them being habitable for people, so, we do think that they need to be regulated more than if somebody were to just throw up a shed, or something like that, in their backyard, cuz there's gonna be people living in them, so. A couple of surrounding communities do have regulations for these, Isany County and St. Francis, that we looked at specifically, that regulate ADUs in the forms of ordinances, handouts, stuff like that. There was a handout attached to the packet, I'm sure you guys might have looked at, this is a picture from that, just kinda giving you different options of what ADUs might look like in the city. Some are interior basement, at, upper floor, stuff like that, above the garage, and then, of course, the detached is, in my opinion, it might be a little more rare than something already in a house, but that's kinda why we wanna regulate these. So the definition of an ADU, this is just kind of a standard definition, it's a second dwelling unit subordinate to a principal one-family dwelling, within or attached to a one-family, or in a detached accessory building, on the same zoning lot. So there's some benefits of having an ADU on, on your lot. These include increased property value, provides a family space for guests visiting from out of town, low-cost housing for senior family members and caretakers, adult children and college graduates can live in these spaces, and then, some people do use them for home offices, they might not necessarily be living in them, sleeping in them, but just for a separate space that their primary home doesn't currently provide them. So these suggested regulations are kinda pulled from the St. Francis ordinance, just because we thought that a jurisdiction such as them would more resemble what we're going for, rather than Isany County's, Isany County's is a lot, it's kinda tailored towards like a rural setting, and St. Francis is more smaller lot oriented, and stuff like that, so I'll kinda go through some of these here. All ADU operators shall apply for and maintain a rental license with the city, so this is pretty obvious, if you have somebody living in them, then we should inspect them, they should apply for rental license with the city, just so that we can keep going in them as well. Every couple of years, make sure that they're not deteriorating, anything like that. The owners of the property on which the ADU is created must continue to occupy at least one of these dwelling units as their primary residence, except for a temporary absence. So this is just making sure that the person who is renting the ADU isn't, there's, there's not two renters on the same property, is what we should say. That it would either be, like on the previous slide, relative, or one separate renter, but needing that one primary, primary owner of the ADU to be living on the property is a good thing. The size of the ADU shall be no larger than the finished floor area of the principal structure. We could, if you want, put a limit on that, you know, how big they could be, stuff like that, but I think with the forty percent impervious, we've already kind of done that, to, to an extent, so, that kind of is included in that. No more than four persons shall occupy an ADU at one time. No more than one ADU shall be placed on a property, so then we're not, you know, we're not having, you know, ten cars at one house for, you know, separate people, you know, the landlord's making ten thousand dollars a month on one property, so. Off-street parking spaces shall be provided, two off-street spaces for the principal dwelling, and then additional two for the ADU. In areas with public utilities, the ADU's water sewer connection shall be connected to the existing home. In rural areas, septic must be sized to meet total bedroom count, principal structure, plus the ADU. A deed restriction shall be created and recorded with Isany County, restricting the independent sale of the ADU, and requiring adherence to size limitations and other requirements. If the ADU is proposed under four hundred square feet, it must meet regulations found in the Minnesota State Building Code, Appendix Q for tiny houses. This was something brought up by our building official, just making sure that it does meet specific living regulations that are, that are with the state, too, and you can't just neglect the state building code, too.
And, we would have to adopt that as part of this process, cuz we currently don't reference Appendix Q at all within our zoning ordinance, so that would also need to be adopted.
And then, the ADU shall meet setback in building material regulations, similar to accessory structures, that's already in section thirteen of our zoning ordinances, so it would, it would have to look similar to the primary structure.
I, I do have a question, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, that one that you just talked about, the under four hundred square foot tiny houses, why, why do we need that? Can't we just use the conventional building code that we have? I mean, what's the difference? Because a building code on a four hundred square foot building is gonna be the same as a building code on a thousand square foot building, isn't it? As far as the materials and the, the type of construction?
It's not allowed. A, a resident, or a sleeping room, I've, from what I understand, an area is not allowed under the current building code of anything under four hundred square feet. So, it's not that, it would allow us to allow something that small.
So right now, in the city of Isany, you can't build a house that's under four hundred square feet?
No.
Okay.
Five hundred, actually, I think is our smallest apartment that we allow.
Okay.
Apartment? Did you say apartment? Okay. Houses, though, have to be-
Nine sixty.
Okay.
How does that apply, then, like, cuz we had mentioned that if they, if it's not detached, or, you know, if they're just turning the basement into something like this, does, if it's under four hundred square, square feet, and it's already part of the house that they're already in, does that seem, that doesn't apply to that, right? I mean-
Well, this would be for like building it.
Right, okay.
So if it's already there in the house, then, that won't apply, it would just have to follow our rental ordinances.
Which, you can get around, because you can just go finish your basement off, and, and not say that it's being rented out, so. I mean, there's holes in that whole thing.
There's, there's definitely holes, and we know that we already have some of these existing within the city, and we don't have a clear answer to how we can rectify that situation, but this allows us to allow for them to actually be existing within the city. Nothing's perfect when it comes to changing zoning code, and you guys know that, but this at least is our attempt to allow more flexibility.
How much is a rental license? I mean, let's say if they're, I mean, they're not making money off it, if they're just letting their mother-in-law stay there, or something like that, but-
Single family is a hundred fifty dollars.
For the year?
Uh, for a two-year cycle, two-year cycle, okay.
So it's not unreasonable, yeah?
I got no problem with this, I mean, it's, there's, there's, if there's somebody's gonna figure out where to get through loophole, they're gonna loophole it.
We really didn't, we wanted to create less loopholes to have them climb through, so, a lot of cities only allow family to live in these, or caretakers to live in these, we didn't think that was the right way to go about it, because we didn't wanna have to have people.
Go to Hawaii, that's huge.
So-
In Hawaii, that's, almost every property has a four hundred square foot.
Doing the rental license allows for-
The Airbnbs are getting popular.
Yep, and A, like, yeah, Asian culture as well, a lot of the families stick together for, for their entire lives.
Asian culture? They sleep on the floor, and there's eight hundred people in the house. Trust me, I know that. Other than that, I mean, I think, I'm fine with this, I, I think it's giving people more choices to do something.
I think it's great.
So, I mean, I, I don't think we need to spend a ton of time on this.
No. Uh, the only other question I had was, I mean, do we wanna make sure that the primary owner is still in that first dwelling? I mean, I don't know, is that important to us? I mean, I, you don't want an apartment building put on a single-family lot, right?
I think it said either of the structures that the primary could be staying in, which I think is.
So you wanna live in the tiny house and rent out the rest of your house?
I think that's fair.
Okay with, with that requirement?
That's fine, that's the way I understood it.
And then, what counts as an ADU? So let's say if it's a shop and they've got, you know, a guy works on cars and he's got a, a washer and dryer out there and a bathroom and a shower and stuff, that doesn't count, right? I mean, how would, how would you classify, is it somewhere where you sleep, I guess, is?
It needs to have a kitchen. It needs to have all living facilities in one area.
Okay.
So.
And a bedroom with a closet is a requirement as well?
Is it? Okay. Okay.
So, what we can do now is, um, move this forward to the planning commission meeting too, uh, for the April meeting. Just, it would just be an ordinance change, uh, or adding it into section thirteen, uh, kinda with accessory structures. Um, it would just get its own separate.
Yeah, so accessories, all of the accessory structures will be together and we'll present that at the, or I will present that at the.
And there was also a worksheet, uh, in your packet too, uh, that I included. Uh, that was from St. Francis as well. All of our permits are online now, uh, or they can be accessed online, so what we do is just put in, uh, some of those questions, uh, into our online system. And that would be like their application.
Sure.
And I know Jimmy did, uh, you did mention this during your, uh, Chamber of Commerce thing, uh, presentation, and a lot of people seemed kinda excited about it. So I think it's a good idea. I don't, I don't know who brought it up, but I think it's, it's pretty awesome.
Uh, Christie did.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's awesome. There's a lot of benefits to it for people that have lived here forever, you know, or have family and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the idea of having in-laws and stuff staying with you and being close by the family, admit it, to me, that's an attractive thing, especially when you've got a lot of young families coming to town and, you know, I mean, the, the more we can keep families together, the better.
Yeah, even for me, I take care of my parents, you know, so it's.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Uh, let's see, do we wanna jump into E four here quick and, uh, comments during live meeting, uh, excuse me, live streaming discussion?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor and Council. So just to recap, um, a conversation that we started last, um, meeting is we did first test out our live streaming on YouTube, um, on that platform. As of last meeting, we did test it out on Facebook. We are also continuing to test out on Facebook to see if we have any bugs to work out. We are not, we did find that we are not able to turn off the comments on Facebook, um, live, but leave it on during, or just on for comments on our Facebook page. It's kinda yes or no altogether. Um, I'd like to read, um, from the memo, just some things to consider. So allowing comments, um, this, in the research that I did, allowing comments during a live stream meeting creates a public forum, which due to it being a public forum, which is outlined by statute, must abide by records retention and data practice laws. Comments become part of the meeting even though they are not read during the meeting, because live streaming is optional and you're creating a public forum for it, you do have to make sure that you follow all the laws with that. Comments should be archived due to becoming a public forum, which may be a tedious task for staff. Other, our companies that do it, we actually were reached out to by a company after our last meeting, letting us know the services that they provide and, um, a city that had been sued for not, um, complying with all the data practices of those comments. They do, um, service, uh, I think they listed for other cities that they helped them with their records retention, retention of all the comments and things. I had shared at the last meeting, I do go through comments, whether it's on our live or not, um, just to unhide things. I'm not sure what logarithms Facebook uses, but sometimes it hides comments that I'm not sure why it hid. That's concerning to me, because what if I don't see it and unhide it, and then someone wonders where their comment went? That's a little bit troubling, and I don't know why Facebook does that. And then, a question to be asked is, we do have outlined in our chapter eight city code bylaws of how people do comment at our meetings. Uh, they do need to state their name, their address, so we know, um, that they're, what relevance they are to the topic at hand, which should be city business only. When they bring things, they have, um, some rules that they have to abide by, which is no vulgar, um, language. They have a time limit as well, unless, uh, the presenting officer wants to continue on, um, and some other rules with that that's outlined. I think that those are difficult things to, um, control if it's online. So just a question for council, if we want, how we would do that?
I did a little research in this, and I think we should look more into it. People that are doing face, or cities that are doing Facebook Live, they make a disclaimer at the beginning of the meeting. So before the meeting starts, who's ever controlled the Facebook page makes a disclaimer, and I don't believe they use that as their official meeting, so they don't have to archive anything. We can use our Facebook as an official meeting, and obviously, we keep a audio record. I'd look into that more. I didn't, I've tried to reach out to a few different cities, and I never got an official callback from any of them. But looking at their Facebook pages, that's the way it looks like they do it. They just make a disclaimer right before the meeting at the top of the, where they go live, you can make a comment at the same time, right before you go live or as you go live. Um, I think that gets you out of the legal thing you were talking about, where we would have to keep track of all the records.
I could definitely look into that.
I, I would look into that just a little more. I was, I, I wanted to have a better answer for you, but I couldn't get anybody to get back to me. And comments, I think, I think it went great last week. I liked the input. I was shocked. I've never seen it. I'm sure not a thousand one hundred people actually watched the whole meeting, but.
I think the average view length, yeah, the average view length was three minutes, if you look at the analytics.
Okay, so you were able to see that. Could you see how many people actually watched the whole meeting?
No, it's not gonna give you that.
I didn't see that, but I, I could look into it.
It'll, it'll give you the average watch time, and then if, if you go into analytics, it'll show you where the peak watch times were. It'll show you the peak forms, but that's it. Um, so I thought it was great, you know, there was, I think there was like a hundred and sixteen comments. Some of them were unrelated, um, some of them were not helpful, but there was, there were three people that commented that they liked the comments and we should keep them. Um, I think we need to listen to the residents on that if we can. And then, as well as, there was, there were two people that commented, and I actually messaged them, and I interacted with them, which I think is good, because it, it creates a platform for people to communicate openly with us. There is not very many people that wanna jump on a call or call one of us to talk about something, but a message is so much less intrusive for, for people, especially after COVID. You know, they can send a message to us. I was responding to every, I tried to respond to every comment on there. I think it's great for us to have more public input than we've ever had before.
Did you respond to them during the meeting?
No.
I was gonna say.
No.
There's no way.
Yep.
Because then that's not being very transparent.
I agree a hundred percent. I did it after the meeting.
That's why I've always been dead set against having comments. We're gonna have something that's gonna come off wrong, or we're not, we're not responding to those comments as a council. It's gonna drag things out beyond belief. That's why I've been dead set against it.
Sure, yeah, I understand, yeah. Absolutely not responding or even reading them in, in the meeting. That's not, that's not something I wanna do, but the fact that we have that free information after the meeting as council members, I think is important. And I, I do like your idea, putting in a disclaimer. There's got, there has to be a way, because, I mean, it's the twenty-first century. Social media is huge. Everybody's live streaming. We can't, we can't shut off that avenue for free public comment when we barely get anything. I mean, I, I mean, I probably get maybe one or two calls or messages a week about city business. I don't know. And the fact that you can go in and read a hundred comments, just like that, and it doesn't cost us anything, it's, I think it's huge. But yeah, it's, it sucks, there's so many hoops to jump through.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, um, with it coming to the end of this time, if you want to ask for a motion to con, proceed after the planning commission?
Yep, if I can get a motion to postpone until after the planning commission is over, um, we'll pick this discussion up then.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.